Good evening. Being 6 o'clock, I'll call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. We are at the Senior Center, 29 Forest Street. If you'd all rise and join me in saluting the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First order of business is approval of the minutes. I want to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of April 2nd and the minutes of April...
Ninth.
Yeah, the ninth, but I don't think...
It was just you and I.
Yeah, so we'll do April 2nd.
Well, he wasn't here for those either.
I wasn't here for anyone.
Oh, you weren't there for that one either? Oh, it's just you and I. So we can do both.
Motion to approve.
I'll go second. All in favor?
Aye.
The next order of business is approval of the warrants. I'll entertain a motion to approve school warrant number 1050 for eighty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents, general warrant number 1051 for thirty-five thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-six cents, and payroll warrant number 21 for three hundred and nineteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents.
So moved.
Second.
May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
So, old business. We got to sign the warrant for the annual and the special town meeting. So these are as read and as written in the drafts. I don't think there were any changes necessary.
Do I have to do the same one? Did I follow the same?
Oh, did you? Oh, sorry.
Hate to miss out, you know.
Yeah. Okay, so the liquor license transfer is set for 6:15, so I think we have another seven minutes before we can open that. So let's do the March fire report. Joey's not here, we can't do that. Quick, quickly. Jason, you want to have it?
The fire report for March. We had another very busy month with the heavy rains. These storms caused a lot of damage to many homes. We had crews on call assisting many residents flooded basements. Had one building fire, one chimney fire, one trash hauler truck fire, two medical assists with EMS, one gas leak in an apartment, numerous flooded cellars, one snowmobile through the ice, cover school regarding electrical issue, two false alarms, five smoke alarm runs, burnt food, and three carbon monoxide alarms. We're getting many contractors inquiring about the fire station building. Thank you for all your support and have a great day. Chief Joseph Hawley.
So I guess we'll entertain a motion to accept the March report from the fire department.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't see a police report in the package. Anybody? Do you have one?
Hello?
So five minutes left for that. You want to talk about the water issue real quick?
Sure. So as probably everybody knows, we've had quite a bit of problems with the stormwater flowing properly with clogged up drains and whatever else across town. And Highway is working as hard as they can to get all that stuff rectified. And we just need people to be patient. And in some cases, they may have to dig up next to your house on the street if your drain happens to be clogged or crushed or whatnot. About a month ago, we had a, an issue where someone's, the yard was getting flooded because the stormwater had backed up into their yard. And when the Highway Superintendent went over there, it had been, you know, it had all dissipated. But yesterday, we received some pictures from that same area, and it was quite bad, and it happens to be undermining the road a little bit. And the Highway Superintendent went there this morning to fix it, and it appears that it's coming from where the stormwater pipe goes through the resident's property. And it appears that it may have been crushed by something on that property. And the resident was belligerent, and it happens to be a public safety issue. So I told the Highway Superintendent to take a detail with him and fix it so as not to have to, you know, repair the road in the long run because of washout.
It was already undermining the road?
Yes.
So...
Yep.
Yeah, and there's a couple other places like that. I know Danny Roman called today also. There's an issue over there we got to address with a storm drain being plugged up, and that causes a lot of flooding to some yards, so we got to address that. And if anybody has any issues with flooding, beavers, anything like that, we have a hazard mitigation team that's looking into this. So if you get in touch with the hazard mitigation group and report it, it'll get on our radar screen for us to address that. Any of you?
I don't think so. I think the big thing is that if the town has a drain that keeps your property or your neighbor's property from flooding, and it happens to be, you know, adjacent to whatever lot you may have, you have to be understanding when they come and try to clean it out and rectify the situation, because it's only helping everybody if they take care of it. So...
Anything on that, Joe? Have you received any?
I haven't heard, but there is a lot, you know, traveling the roads around, there are a lot of roads in bad shape because of the flooding, and it's nothing anybody but the rain has caused. So like Jason has said, be patient with Highway. They're trying. They're doing their best, but there's a lot of damage out there.
All right. So I have 6:15, so I will open the liquor license transfer hearing. Who wants to talk, because I don't have a lot of information in front of me. Our secretary's been held, so...
That's good.
Okay. Let's play, is it you?
You want to start? I can defer to my brother. Arthur represents the buyers. I represent the general Beth.
Okay.
I think everyone knows Beth, and everyone knows Steve.
Yeah.
She's signed an agreement to sell the country package store.
Okay.
You all know that's been through a few years.
Sure.
So we have a good buyer who is represented by Arthur Kromen, who's here. And I'll let Arthur take us on the background.
Great, thanks.
Please, the board. My name is Arthur Kromen. I represent DePauli Patel, her associates, and Sri Shiv Inc. I have here an affidavit which might be helpful to you if you would like it.
Oh, thank you.
That's the original, and I've got two copies. That covers your deed for the ABC as far as providing an evidence of publication. Sri Shiv Inc. is seeking a chance for the package store called Alcohol License, currently held by St. Jesus Package Store Inc. for the premises of 221 North Main Street in North Brookfield. I just submitted to you an affidavit and exhibits relative to public notice, mail notice to a butters is not required for a transfer. Sri Shiv Inc. is a mass corporation. DePauli Patel will be the sole officer-director, and she's a 15% shareholder. Kanaji Swadi is a 35% shareholder, and Asha Patel is a 50% shareholder. DePauli Patel will be the manager of the business. DePauli Patel is currently living at 773 Worcester Street in South Bridge. DePauli owns and manages a business located in Brimfield, Massachusetts, and she previously owned a business in Charlton, Massachusetts. Both of them have liquor licenses. But right now, she's disposed of one, but she still has one. She will be spending at least 40 hours a week at this store here in North Brookfield. The business currently operating at 221, I believe, is open seven days a week with hours of 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Monday and Saturday, and Sunday 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And those are the hours that Sri Shiv would like to maintain. In addition, the layout of the store is as per the plan that we submitted to you. That will stay the same. The name of the store will be changed to North Brookfield Liquors. DePauli already hasn't been in the liquor business, is familiar with the laws relative to the sale of alcohol. She has a, has been TIPS trained. I believe it's run out. She's going to be retrained again, but she already holds a TIPS certificate. And we would respectfully request that you allow or approve the transfer of the license.
What about the employees that are currently there? Is there going to be a turnover in employees? Are we going to employ people from town? Is, what's the plan there?
No idea.
No idea?
I'm pretty ready to be talked to whenever, but we, they're still running their business, and we haven't interfered with their running of the business until we have an approval of the license. Then I'm sure there'll be discussions.
This group isn't the same group that, that has the liquor license over at the Bob's Deli? It's a different group? You don't...
You don't? You don't?
Yeah.
In this town?
In this town?
No, not in this town.
No? Okay. I thought it was a Patel. Wasn't it a Patel?
It might be, but it's...
Different.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah? Got anything?
Nope.
Anything?
Nope. Everybody's happy with it. You guys are happy with the sale, and you're happy with the buy. And this, all this stuff here means that they have done everything.
Yeah, that's all the stuff they had to... I'm sure Leslie has that, right? Our administrative assistant, did you give that package?
Correct.
Yeah, I think the only thing we need to do is sign this form and hand it back to her for the...
Yep, so all this stuff has been taken care of.
With this affidavit. Yep. Yep.
That was all in the package that was submitted to you. Everything on that, on that cover sheet?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, everything on that was submitted to you.
Yeah, it goes to our administrative assistant. We don't see much of it at all.
Okay.
She handles all of it, and she's ill, so that's why we're a little behind with the info. But we'll make sure it gets submitted timely.
Yeah, that one just has to be signed by your board.
This one? Yeah, and it goes with the package and everything. Gets submitted to ABCC is what I understand, right?
Correct.
And then they look for any deficiencies and approve it from there, right?
Right. Here's about four, six.
Yeah. Okay. I entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
May I have a second? Any discussion? Anybody else? Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to town.
Thank you.
Thanks, boys.
Take care.
Is Murphy coming in? I thought, I saw some little John Murphy for his clock plan over there. Maybe they had some planning board.
Um...
Might be the planning board.
Yeah.
Because I saw it was such, it must be the planning board.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the next one we have...
Initial bid.
Yeah, it's a poll hearing, but it's on for 6:30, so I don't know that I can take that up.
No, we can go through everything else, though. All the announcements and...
Yeah, we can do that.
Public comment period.
Good. Start with the announcements. The election update, I guess. Jason's going to do the election update.
Oh, you want me to do it?
Yeah.
Okay. So the official ballot for the annual town elections, and it's Monday, May 6th, is here at 29 Forest Street, the Senior Center. Polling hours are 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. If you have any questions, you can call the town clerk at 508-867-0203. And Selectmen for three years, Dale Kylie is candidate for reelection. Town clerk for three years, Tara M. Hayes. Moderator for three years, James Caldwell's candidate for reelection. Assessor for three years, Sheila Buzzell, candidate for reelection. Constables for three years, Tim Nason, candidate for reelection. Dennis Trelle, candidate for reelection. And Michael Splain. School committee for three years, there's no candidate. And do you remember who's not going to be on it?
Um, who do you...
I think we could write in John Tripp.
No, don't do that. John Tripp has plenty to do.
Lot of commissioner for three years, Scott M. Bombard. Board of Health for three years, Trevor Potter-Bruzzo. Board of Health for one year, Robert Locatelli. Cemetery Commissioner for three years, there's no candidate. Planning Board for five years, William H. King, candidate for reelection. Planning Board for two years, Susan Lyons. And John R. Turner, who happens to be, he's the one filling in, right?
Right.
He was the appointment.
Yes.
So... Library trustees for three years, vote for two, Margaret Bodine for reelection, and David Maher Jr. Playground Committee for three years, there's no candidate. Housing Authority for five years, Mary Dolan. And that's that.
Excellent. You want to do the dog licenses?
2019 dog licenses, now available at the town clerk's office, Tuesday and Thursday, 12 to 3. Tuesday evening, 5 to 8. Through the mail, send a self-addressed stamped envelope. The fees are $8 for spayed or neutered, $12 otherwise. Late fees per household after June 1st are $5. After September 1st are $25. And I believe the dog license is due as soon as you can, so you don't get the late fee.
We got to respond to the water commissioners.
Okay.
With the, um... If they're taking over the billing...
Mm-hmm.
They sent us a letter. We need to formally respond to them, because they're paying $10,000 to the Sewer Department.
Mm-hmm.
And if they're going to take over the billing for both departments, they want to do away with the Sewer Department payment...
Mm-hmm.
...to recoup the money that they're going to spend on the billing.
Okay.
So I think we discussed that already, right?
We did. We discussed it a few times, and we told them that that was going to be the case, so...
Yeah, so I guess they're just... I think that was communicated to them, too. I just think they want something official and...
Right.
I'll take care of that this week, then. All right. Anybody get anything to bring up in the next five minutes?
Yeah, I just, a while ago, I mentioned I wanted to replace the school outside. I just wanted to say, and publicly thank Jim Caldwell for making the sign for me.
Oh, nice.
And should be going up soon, this weekend, when the other weekends I'm free, John Street.
And where's District 8?
Oh, this is on Brookyard Road.
Okay.
Near the, actually near the rail trail. It's very close to it, so I thought it'd be, you know, a good place to start, replacing it. Actually, really, the only other one that I've seen around is the one that's attached to Highway Barn, but, so, you know...
There used to be one on Madbrook years ago. It's District 6, I think.
They, yeah, there were eight altogether. Apparently, you know, I wasn't involved, but Jim was telling me, it's been at least 20 years, and it was the Eagle Scout project, and somebody, one of these Eagle Scouts went around and did all of them at one time. I looked for some others. I didn't see any others, but, you know, if anybody comes across one, maybe we can consider doing them also.
Yeah, do we have a, you have a list of locations of where the schools were located at one point?
I have it on the map.
Yeah.
So, yeah, pretty much all of them are.
We'll see if we can start making those and putting them, you know?
I mean, he did this for free. I want to ask him to do a number seven, six for free, but...
John will do it. He does a lot for free.
Anyway, you know, so I thought that'd be, with the rail trail going in, I thought it'd be nice to add that putback up.
Yep. Very nice. We'll thank Jim when we see him, but thank you. It's a nice, nice piece to have up. I like the history stuff.
One other thing I just want to comment on for Brandon. Earth Day is coming up, and I don't know if there's going to be any more trash on the side of the road, because I've seen Brandon out there half a dozen times, filling a trash bag, picking things up.
A lot of other people have been doing it.
I see you all over the place, so I just want to thank you for helping out and cleaning up the side of the road. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you to Brandon and everybody else that's picking up trash. It's a good service to the community.
The school kids were doing it.
Nice.
It's all posted, they were doing along the path that goes to Broadshaw Street. It kind of reminds me of the lot that kind of tucked up a while ago, that, you know, it's kind of been, use of it underground for the highway.
It's a staging area that they're doing for... I've talked with Jason about that. He cleaned it up, and then the staging area for North Common Street ended up dumping it. It'll be cleaned up again, so...
I mean, you know, hopefully over time it can be cleaned up, you know? I mean, as time permits, I'm, yeah, I know they're busy and stuff, so...
Is it construction stuff, or is it trash there?
No, a lot of it is, there's like old concrete piping from, I don't know when, maybe when there's something that's done that was dumped there, and there was an old plow blade dumped back there, some other metal things, some couple of Jersey barriers, things like that. You know, and it's, it's a nice lot, you know? It was, and it's a nice access to the school, you know, so...
Yeah, we'll have to ask them to clean that out. There's other places they can store that stuff.
Well, it was quick for the North Common Street thing, for them to just dump it there.
Oh, sure.
And I've talked with Jason, he's going to, when they're done with the...
Some of that stuff's been there for years.
Oh, yeah, I know it.
I mean, way before the current Highway Superintendent, so I'm certainly not blaming him for anything, you know? But it'd be nice to, you know, we're, you know, trying to get things rolling into town with the, you know, townhouse and the rail trail, you know? It's a nice neighborhood, a nice neighborhood, old wood block.
Yeah.
Pick it up and dump it down.
Well, we'll ask them to get to it when they, as soon as they possibly can, so...
Like you said, I mean, I know the business is going to be busy with speech supervision and stuff, but if they could keep it on their radar, you know, pick away at it, you know?
Yep. Sounds good. Anything else? You good? All right. Close enough, 6:30. I will open the Brookfield Road Poll Hearing. Is there two of them?
No, just one.
Oh, just one?
Yeah.
Okay. You want to come up and tell us what we're, what the plan is?
Well, as you can see in the paper, the plan has already been, we had a tree guy across the street from the primary pole that fell down in one of the storms.
Okay.
One of the windstorms we had. And so the overhead supervisor made a decision to go out and put the stub pole in for safety reasons.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, wanted to go through the normal channels and come up here and petition, make sure the pole was okay with you guys.
Yep.
Definitely not how we normally do it, but...
Yeah.
They're in a storm, and they're... Thank you, Judge.
We understand.
Do they need to do a butters or anything? Is a poll going on somebody's property?
No, it's town property.
Town property?
Everything's in the town property, the pole and the anchor.
So it's the anchor of the pole across the street?
Correct, yeah.
See that?
Yeah.
So the two services, when, when the tree guy let go, the two services became very low to those two houses that the pole is serving. So that was what his concern was. He needed to get those services back up to a safe height. Better than the storm.
Yep. So they're putting a pole and an anchor.
Yeah. Yeah, it's already there. It's just on the backside of the guide rail. There's a guide rail right there on Brookfield Road. It's just on the backside of the guide rail.
Yep. And were the butters notified? Looks like in a butters list here. Were they notifying it?
I don't know. Would we do that, or do, does the town normally do that for the hearing?
We may have. I'm sure it's not an issue anyway, but...
The only piece of property is a giant. The town owns the big, the big piece of property south of that. Works like a very large parcel of land there still. I thought it was town owned when I looked it up.
Okay.
That's right, it's a corner, right?
Yeah.
So see, this is, this is town park.
Oh, yeah.
So this is 20 Westbrook Field Road is over here, and it's...
Yes.
Okay.
All right, sounds good. I'll entertain a motion, we approve the poll.
So moved.
Second?
May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, another one.
I get to sign this, too?
Yeah. So, that's all the business we have for tonight, unless you got something else?
The big thing for me was the stormwater.
John, you got anything you need to bring up?
Just that the rail trail clearing is in progress again because of Easter Sunday going on. I'm going to work on Saturday instead from 9:00 to 1:00, because I have to cook the ham on Sunday. And I didn't get permission to leave the house. So if anybody's interested, we'll be down on Conmoren Road at the beginning there, and we're headed south. We made a lot of progress in the last two Sundays. We're almost where the old Chase Precast used to be in the back, clearing the brush. We're finding a lot of trash and debris, tires, microwaves, televisions, radios, record players, lawn furniture, all kinds of stuff. I can fill my pickup already, and we've only gone about a half a mile. So we're asking people to stop throwing their trash all over town, but the rail trail has taken a beating over the years. We're going to clean that up, and maybe on Earth Day, we'll have it taken to the dump.
Excellent.
And we're, I've talked to a guy about swing gates for the ends of each portion of the trail. I'm supposed to meet with him toward the end of the week. He's going to draw up a design for the gates, and he mentioned doing some of the work on his own and not charging us for the welding and the makeup, the design of everything. So hopefully, we can get a few gates made, and we'd probably be looking for donations to pay for a gate. If you want your name on it, we could do that as a donation type of deal, but that's...
Do you know how many gates we need?
I don't. There'll be two on each spur, on each section. Maybe towards this end of town, we only need one, because one can only go down a short entrance.
We need one on Route 9, too.
And we need one down on the, we need one down on the Route 9 where the tire meets our, our trail down there, and on this end of it, a...